But not the whole, it's plenty what it is.
He's the chair. I think, huh?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but that, no, it's beyond that. It's good, it's good.
Oh, well, I wouldn't know.
No, no, it's good. Seven, eight, seven, eight P M.
I, I am calling the sub, city council subcommittee meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Harris called it order or called, uh.
Okay, Tony.
Yeah, we're doing the thing. Uh, we know we're all here. So basically, uh, first step is public comment. Do you have any comments, Ms. uh, Shapiro or others who are still in the room?
You know, I made my comment online and I spoke again, so everybody heard.
Okay. So, uh, what I just gave to Ms. Byrd and Ms. Cook is what we previously received on city council draft and also a secondary draft that, uh, was put to me after we learned about the procedure for, um, being able to go between at-large and district systems even once the charter is adopted. Because a, a large part of this conversation has been how, once we have agreed to a form of government, that includes that structure, whether it can be at-large or districts. But since there has been the recognition that we can change between an at-large and districted system once the charter is adopted. Um, so that is what the almost, almost one-sided, um, draft you have in front of you is, um.
Tony, excuse me one second. Please, uh, tell me the difference between these two documents you gave me.
The ones that say draft are what P E L drafted for us and we all received. Uh, the one that is just a singular page with not the word draft was sent to me about a month ago. Once we were, I'm guessing on a month right now, uh, once we had realized that we were wrong and we can do modifications between district and at-large. So it actually highlights, uh, section two oh five and that other draft says like change in method of election, uh, the procedure of how we do that. And a large part of the reapportioning committee, if not all of it, is actually taken from the Home Rule Charter law. So that is some of the structure there. Um, where I actually want to start the conversation here is that it, there's been such a, a commitment, it seems so far, to having a council comprised of seven members. But I think to allow the flexibility between different forms of government, we, we should be going to a nine-member council. Um, because if at the end we do, we decide to resolve around an at-large system, but still want to leave the option open for flexibility, it makes sense to have nine. Um, what I'd actually like to see, and I don't know that any other charter has done this. I, I would argue myself that if we build in a ratio for how many people to council members, uh, that would be the form of government. Because we are, we are deciding that it is important for us as a city to always be represented in a model that has an approximately same amount of representatives to population.
How often then would that representation change based on population?
Every decennial census would be when more is there.
Every ten years.
And, and it'd be like a, a range. It wouldn't just be like one set number. We'd have to create a range to ensure that there's options. Uh, it, it will be a little bit more complicated, but that to me seems like the only feasible way to allow the question to, uh, expand or reduce the number of members of council, regardless of whether it's a district or at-large system. So I will be talking to P E L over the next, uh, week to try and get, uh, a new draft put together, not of these two. I just wanted to make sure you had these in hand, um, with that consideration for a ratio so we can see what some of that would look like, some of the nuance that would need to be there. Um, and also look at how we can consider the method of election change. This, this kind of bleeds into the four on discussion or needed staff support or advising. I'm going to be using the recent, sorry, what?
On the four?
Uh, fourth part of the agenda, I apologize.
Thank you.
Making sure that we can include, uh, citizen control as much as possible to reduce the politics of reapportionment. And keeping in mind that reapportionment only really comes into play if there is a districted system, which regardless of what we decide for the charter at the end of this or in, in the middle of this year, could change later. So I think it's important that we build that system in now, regardless of what the final say is on district or at-large this year. Because it ensures that going forward, those safeguards are in place for the future. Uh, and I'm going to be talking, I mean, going to be using the, uh, resources of fair districts uh, to see what we can do there. I am not sure what can be done at this moment because it is written in the state law.
What's written in the state law?
Uh, the, the process for reapportionment. That's in the Home Rule, uh, Charter law.
Okay.
But on that note then, uh, I am curious to hear from both of you. We've put forward maps. Um, Dave's redistricting is a wonderful tool for us to actually bounce ideas off of. And I'm curious, because I, I believe, I, I believe the three of us have been from the general meetings and some have consensus that a hybrid system with five at-large and four districts. Am I correct in saying that?
But you said what?
Um, if we do do a hybrid system, there would be five at-large and four districts.
Hmm, I'm, I'm not sure that I agree with that. I think if we're going to have nine council members, and I was thinking there would, yes, be four districts. I would like to know, we currently have four D J districts in the city. Can we not use those districts?
Okay, so I will, I will do an evaluation to see how close we could come to the M D J districts for the city.
Right, and see if, if we have to do a lot more redistricting. Because I think they're divided ever by, um, numbers as well.
Okay.
And so, and we do have the four quadrants of the M D J districts. So if we could use those districts, I would see us electing two council members from each district and one at-large if we're going with the nine. My purpose for that is that council needs a motion and a second. And if you're the only person representing, then there's not a second. The discussion does not come up unless we get into the stuff that P E L was talking about, where we get citizens to get two hundred signatures to sign, uh, a petition to make it become a council agenda item. So unless that would happen, so I would see making that easier by just having two representations from the four quadrants, if we're allowed to use the M D J. I think it takes three one, which is not in the southeast area, and is now currently in the southeast area, but three one is a small precinct anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know.
Three one is one of the districts within the southeast is what you're saying.
Right, but it's not located in the southeast. But yes, so, um.
You said it's not located in the southeast?
It's not.
Uh, three, I'm pretty sure, that's where Church Street's at, right?
Church Street, yeah, Church Street.
Yeah, that's southeast.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on now.
But three one, yeah, yeah, I was just thinking a ward, seventh ward, third ward, yes.
District three one.
Yes, so that is in the southeast. So those four districts, hoping that we could use them. Because I think then the boundary's already set. I don't know what does law say? Are we allowed to use that or not? Do you know?
We will evaluate and find out.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to fall within certain population variance parameters. Like I will say, I evaluated, uh, the, the modified quadrant map I put forward and it was, it was close. It was, I think, eleven point two six and it has to be under ten percent variance. So, um, I, I was.
Move something around, yeah.
Yeah, because someone did give me some feedback that, you know, include some of the second ward instead to try and get that variance below. So, so we have some options. Um, but I think we're in, we might disagree on how many councillors per district, but there does seem to be a consensus around building a system with four districts, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And I do like the idea, um, at least at this point, of there being two representatives for each of the four districts and then one at-large, um, city council person. So there would be two.
Okay.
Per four M D J districts, right? And then one at-large.
Okay, so we'll evaluate to see what the M D J districts would look like and what the variances are on those. Um, I will say, part of why I put forward that five-four plan with five at-large and four districts is because there has been some concern about districts. So I think that's the conversation we should take to the community in general is, hey, if, how would you feel about two per district versus one per district? I think that would be an important conversation to have within the neighborhoods. Um, because at, we can change the, the system later. Like we can switch to a two, to two councillors per district as well.
Why wouldn't we start out with two councils per district and if it didn't work, change it to one?
That's a fair point. No, that's a very fair point and I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying we, we should, we should take it out and see how people feel.
I'm just saying if we're going to present it to the public, it shouldn't be because we can change it later. Because then the question's going to be, if we can change it later, then why don't we start with two and change it to one later?
That's fair.
The conversation is, when we present it, let's think of a different way because not saying we can change it later is going to make a lot of good sense to people.
And, and I, I do also want to say like, you know, whatever we do in this subcommittee, we also need to make sure that a majority of our committee as a whole agrees with that as well. So that is part of the conversation as well. So we could, we, we have to ask at, at the end, the committee of the whole. Um, because we are just a subcommittee trying to expedite this level of work to come to a consensus to hope that we can expedite the process of approval when we're at our general meetings. Uh, so I will, I will look at maps with four districts, both ones that have already been presented and using the M D J districts just to gauge opinion. Um, and if needed, I will seek advising from fair districts on that as well. Uh, but like I said, Dave's redistricting is a powerful tool and that should give us the answers we need. And once we come to a general consensus on what the maps could look like, get a proper review to make sure they're good, um, and go forward from there.
Um, what is Dave's redistricting tool? What is that?
So it's a tool that is used statewide, actually, for the purposes of looking at our state, uh, House districts and Senate districts and how they're gerrymandered and what can be done to build better, more equitable districts.
Okay.
And, and like, actually on the, on the word of equitable, I feel like the work we're doing here ties back to that preamble. Because this is, this is, the work we're doing is try to ensure that equitable representation and have that measure of local control. So I feel good about what we're on this committee for. Um, it is going to be a lot of work over the next month. But I, I'm glad that we're finally here talking about it. Because I, I wanted this to be a subcommittee because I knew that for so long there was such a, a general confusion, not even resistance necessarily, but confusion. Um, and I, since I've been involved in politics, you know, I, I've heard, I've heard the point. The southeast wants representation. And me as an individual, I'm not going to be the guy who turns around and just says, oh, yeah, no, we got, we got to make sure a charter gets passed no matter what. Um, because we shouldn't leave representation on the table. Like this for me, I look at the history of Lancaster, I think about redlining. I think about how parts of town were demolished and others have thrived. Um, this is an opportunity for us to look at the path of the city and recognize that this might not be a silver bullet to fix everything. But I feel like it's going to change the dynamics of how we operate in the city in a positive way. But if we find out their struggles, I want to ensure that this process can be, like, I'm so glad that we know we can switch between systems at some point if needed. Because this process has been, I think we can all read it, very strenuous on all of us. So giving the residents of the city the option to modify their government, um, to a reasonable level without going through a whole Home Rule study process is important to me. And that goes back, I, I, I think I will, um, look at what ratios seem appropriate for a general population growth to give options for the public. Because the population will change every ten years per the census. And at that point, I mean, let's say the city grows. There was a comment from a member of the public who said they thought that one district should be the central business district. And so maybe if the city grows, it provides an opportunity in the future for a new part of town, new part of town to have representation in a way that they might not feel represented by one of these maps. Um, I think, I think this is going to be a really positive, this is going to be really positive work.
I wonder if, and this may be something for, um.
P E.
P E L. Um, now that we've established, um, an I G page, Instagram page, and you can, and polls can be done on those pages, could we ask a question of the public? How do you feel, no? Would you like this or would you like this or you're not sure? Kind of polls, just to say, would you like representation, uh, increased representation on city council? Have you thought about it? Those kinds of polls, is that something that's possible?
I think it's possible. I think you need to be cautious about how you phrase and.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because I don't want, um, I think I just want feedback as far as numbers.
Could you possibly ask the question the way it was asked for us? Do we want, um, five council members or nine council members?
Is that a question possibly that we could ask?
I mean, that wouldn't, you know what I mean, impose it any kind of way. You're just asking the concern about how many council members.
And I think I would run those questions that would be a poll past you first.
Yeah, I'm sure. You could do something like that. Phrasing is important. And then understanding the results that you get back, uh, may or may not be representative of the city as.
Yes, is it, I, actually, I, I do want to make that point. Uh, I like where your head's at. I worry about data skew because people could take that poll that are not necessarily residents of the city since Instagram's a very simplified poll. But we could promote maybe a poll on Lancaster City Engage page through Instagram. Um, because I want to make sure that the opinions we're getting are representative of the members of the public who live in the city.
Yes.
Yes.
That could be one of the questions, though.
Uh, well, my.
They could lie, is that what you're saying?
They, we collect, we can collect better data with Engage and I think Instagram polls, uh, I'm pretty sure they're just one question, aren't they? Like.
I'm not.
Listen, you can ask two.
You can ask two. Um.
And this percentage said yes and this percentage said no? Um, I think, yeah, you can ask a few, a few questions. But I'm not trying to inundate the Instagram page with polls. I'm just asking, as I thought about different things to get data, could we use that? But I understand what you're saying, community engagement page.
Yeah, just, just the data skew essentially.
Yeah.
I would like to see us try to adjust a question about representation. Because I think, you know, that is very mixed in people's mind. I mean, even from some of our commissioners are like, wow, we're, um, they're going to represent this part of the city. What are they talking about? Because if we look at it and we even look at race, we have the Hispanic people most likely are going to call the Hispanic council member for rep, if they have an issue.
Mm-hmm.
So to have someone in your district and just to say, oh, they're only representing. No, I think it gives the people the voice because now they have someone that lives in their district that understands the particular problem because they live in that area. And they can better bring that problem to council for discussion.
Right.
And I think, and, and, and I think people would feel more comfortable. We have a hard time, I mean, I'm out in the community all the time and try to get people to come in here to council to voice their opinion is a very hard thing.
It is.
You know, council is not very welcoming. If you don't answer the question right or you don't say it right and you're taking too long, they're like, oh, your three minutes are up, you're done. You know, I mean, it's not welcoming for people to come to council and to participate. So I think that's my push for district representation. Because I believe it's going to bring in more participation from the community, which is one of the chief responsibilities of the commission.
So I actually like, uh, this conversation because I will say, this is not just about districting at-large. We could draft versions of the charter to include a transitionary period for city council, to require new procedures to ensure that the public can participate remotely, to ensure that the recordings of the meeting are preserved for a set amount of time.
Yep.
Um, because currently video, I, I understand there's a financial cost to that. But I believe transparency and participation is worth those costs because it's how we build a better city as an entire public, that capital P, people.
Right, and I agree. And I looked at technology and I know like for the Home Rule Commission and all of our reports and all of our recordings, they have to be kept for five years. And it's not that expensive of a budget that it's going into our home, our commissioner's study budget is, oh, here's a big cost to us. With technology today to be able to preserve that stuff is not, you know, very expensive. I mean, if it's recorded, you could put it on a thumb drive.
I agree.
And save it. It's not like it's going to run the budget up high. I do think that the courting, recordings for council need to be kept for a certain number of years. Looking at all the charters that P E L has provided to us, most of them do require that the recordings are kept for a time. And those times vary.
All right, so we, I will talk to P E L about that as well and including some language regarding that. Um, because for me, obviously, this is something I've been involved with my entire adult life is trying to make sure the public can access their government from a distance because of the conditions of life, like, you know, let's say a single mom with four kids like mine. You know, she was never going to get to a government meeting. Uh, when I did the school board meetings, that was one of the comments I got most. It was like, I can stay home and watch my kids and still participate in the school board meetings. So I, I do think it's important for us to have those considerations as we move through this draft. Um. I had something in the left at the same time. This is actually, this is going very well. Uh, do you, do you guys have any additional thoughts on what may be, what we may want to see of council for us to draft up at least to, uh, take out to our future meetings here?
I think the discussion was still up as far as term limits, as far as how many terms a council person should be able to serve. And I'm open with that. I, I really don't have it one way or the other, but I heard a lot of, um, conversation about that. And, um, how long a council's term should be, whether it should be two or four years.
Okay.
And, um, and I guess I looked at the, um, at the information you provided us since nineteen ninety-six.
Yes.
And as we move up to two thousand, most of the terms are two years. People are serving two years and going off. Early on in the beginning in nineteen ninety-six, most people served four years unless something happened. Now we're seeing this rotation flow.
A little bit more turnover.
Yep, a lot more turnover. Will continue, we don't know. But, um, and I think for people that are talking about representation, I wanted to say, you know, the city has a lot of gentrification that is going on. So what looks like neighborhoods that people are opposing, they don't want represented, it's going to look different, you know, unless council actually addresses that. Something I would like to see. But, uh, you know, I, I've looked, I lived in the southeast area for forty-seven years and I see it changing drastically.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, while we're looking at, oh, the southeast area is this type of a person with this type of income and representation, that is changing. So maybe even within four years, that might look totally different to us now. So we, you know, and that's why I push for, uh, like I said, districting because that area will still be represented. Not that it's just representing the southeast as it, we see it today. But that area will still be represented as well.
Each area, like each, like all the others.
All the other areas, exactly.
I, I think that's part of what this is encouraged, what, what is encouraging for me throughout this process is that, you know, the city will change over time. And I'll, I'll just specify the southeast has definitely changed over time in part because of the malfeasance of government decades ago. Uh, so I actually want to, uh, you reminded me of what I thought of. We had this whole conversation about the healthcare benefits. And I do think that's an important conversation. I, at, previously had said that I would like to see that stay. However, some people have mentioned the whole idea of like, all right, well, what happens if somebody rents in the southeast and then they get evicted? Or rents in the northwest, rents in their district and then they get evicted? Do we want to maybe provide a provision in this that should somebody, um, for reasons not of their own choosing, be in a difficult housing situation? They could forego maybe their wage and have the city set up housing to ensure that they stay within that district?
No, I think we're going too far.
You're talking about city council members?
Yeah.
And I, and I think that's relevant and what he's thinking is because we had a, uh, we had a school board member that was elected and had to move and was almost, might have had to move out of the school district, which meant they could have no longer served in the district. So, you know, and seeing that, how would we stop that? But I think that's stretching it too far.
Okay.
If you have to move, our requirement is you live in the city. I, you know, I mean, if there's housing available and there's organizations or groups, I think that's where your political party might really want you in there and do that. But I think that beside anything that the commission would say, hey, we're going to provide housing for someone. I think that's way overboard.
Uh, yeah.
Just me.
No, 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 I, I hear you. Because like in the same way earlier in our previous meeting, we were talking about how, uh, these things, uh, like an accident and whether the mayor, what that looks like. Um, I think about how if somebody buys a house and chooses to move, I wouldn't want to see that provision. But sometimes people, especially in this gentrification conditions, are victims of circumstance that are out of their control and more of someone else's greed. And I would be interested in, I would be interested in protecting them, but I do think there needs to be financial trade-offs. And so if we were to say, hey, no more healthcare provision for these part-time employees essentially, at least providing an option to ensure that someone's protected and not forcibly kicked out of their district.
Right, and I was one that I was not.
Takes a little more thought for me for that.
I was not one that said get rid of healthcare. I think maybe, you know, we didn't look at any other options. It was like, do we keep healthcare or don't we? And I would like to see them pay more into it. I don't think we have to foot that burden. I think council should be offered healthcare, but I think they need to pay into that more. It shouldn't be put on the residents to cover their care. And I don't think that was even discussed. We didn't even, it was either do we want it or don't we?
It didn't go that far, but the understanding was we would come back to that.
Right.
And discuss further because I had it in mind because it was so far out.
Yeah, how much.
For me, I do, I believe individuals should be offered healthcare. If they don't have it primarily. Um, and I also think there should be a contribution.
Yep.
Um, a reasonable contribution by that individual or those individuals.
Down, they don't.
Um, and I just, it's, it's beyond me that they're offered half, half the amount of the insurance cost if they opt out.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that either.
There shouldn't be no opt-out fees paid to them.
I mean, and even if it's that, even if it's that perhaps compensation is increased for the year.
Okay.
To some levels, to some reasonable level, that an individual who doesn't have insurance and needs it might be able to better afford that?
Mm-hmm.
And I would think that the council person would be insured. I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, P E L, but I think they said that they can insure their families. Isn't that what they said? It's not just them, they can insure their families and we pay.
They'd have to pay.
Yeah, and I think that's, no, I, you know, they're a part-time person. I, I understand and I think council should be given health benefits. I think they should have to pay into it and we should not be covering their families.
Okay, okay, so no, no families, but the individual, yes.
I think the, I think.
Or they pay in for their families, but not as a subsidy. They have to pay the cost if they want it.
So maybe we should talk to Tina Campbell about some of this.
Sure, yeah, I think, um, yes, if they do need family coverage.
Then they got to pay for it.
Then there should be a cost, for sure.
Because I don't know currently if any city employee have to pay into the system. Um.
And that's something we should look at.
That's city employee versus city council elected official.
Right, right. So, so I'll see what, I'll, I'll reach out to Tina Campbell and see, uh, get more information on that. Uh, and just, you know, just again, I'll remind ourselves to keep in mind that whatever we do draft here, the rest of the commission has to be in support of as well. So they.
Of course.
They might say, we're just not comfortable approving this. And because we are on a pretty tight margin here. Um, but I do believe that a majority of us are in support of this. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here tonight. Uh, and furthermore, I want, I want the general public as well to be conscious of what. I come to this meeting as a white man. I come to this meeting as a white man and I, I wanna encourage people when they have opinions on this matter to also reflect on that, themselves and the history of their family, because this, for me, I, I feel like this is an important part of that conversation.
I feel it's important that everyone should feel that we've considered them.
Yes.
Generally speaking.
Yes, 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 yes. Like there are so many reasons to do this beyond just a racial connotation, but that is a factor here and we shouldn't be blind to that.
I'm not.
Um, so on that note, I mean, meeting is being recorded or livestreamed, I forget which, uh, it's being livestreamed. So I will draft up minutes for this then. Um, I think we've primarily discussed a bulk of what we need to discuss as far as the content of a first draft, a new first draft. Um, I will reach out to P E L and Tina Campbell about some of these subject matters. P E L for the drafting, Tina Campbell for, uh, issues of healthcare. Um, and if needed, once we get to the point of if we need to get specific advising on a matter, I will bring that back to you guys to get approval. Um, but like I said, we will be using the resources of fair districts to try and guide our work um, to create equitable representation and an equitable process when these things inevitably, if it is a districted system or hybrid system, do change. Um, because that, that for me is what this is all about, is adaptability without creating overburden like through a new home rule study process.
Cool.
Okay, um. Do you guys have anything?
Um, the draft from P E L, is that within the last, I don't know, week two, three?
No, it was about a month ago.
Okay.
I couldn't look. The, the city council draft?
Yes.
Yeah.
By P E L? Okay.
That, that came out quite a while back.
Okay.
Five twenty-three, which is the date of it.
Okay.
A month ago, yeah. Yeah, about a night.
All right.
All right. Okay.
All right, um, so that being said, uh, do we have any public comment or questions?
I don't know enough yet to question.
Yeah, fair enough.
I was gonna ask prior to this, but I, I just stepped out for a minute over to talk to Carolyn, so. Um, it sounds like right at the beginning of the meeting you were talking about. It sounded like you were talking about the, like, if you create a district system or like switch back and forth or say something by referendum.
Yes.
Say that again.
Yeah, so, um, I was put forward a, a bit of an alternative option, which is what I handed out and I can give you that draft as well, uh, essentially saying like, we recognized, uh, an error in the law, in the interpretation of the law and the conversation had originally been, oh, well, once we create, for example, a seven-member city council system at large, we can't change to hybrid or district system in the future, that is not true. We know that we can change that later, um, through citizen initiative. Uh, what was in debate still though is changing the number of members of council. For me, and I believe the other members of the subcommittee, nine is the number we'd like to see because if there is challenge in changing that, nine is a better number to work with for changing a district, hybrid, whatever system. Um, but what I'd like to do is look into ratios and build that into the charter because that would be a foundational way of looking at our representation and structure of government is that there's always a, between this number and this number, amount population to representatives. Because then that would allow us to change the number of council as the city grows or I dare to say shrink.
I was here for that, so.
Okay.
It is the commission slash subcommittees understanding that form of government.
Does not include at-large or districted.
Does not include, and that the commission can pick one, but then there is the option through citizen initiative to change that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, so we found it, we've realized now it's a more flexible process than we thought.
Is that from P E L?
That is from P E L. Um, so that being said, we went, uh, if there's any more public comment?
Again, I guess, again, the question.
Okay.
Uh, it sounds then like the subcommittee, which is, the subcommittee is quite clearly interested in exploring districts.
Yes.
So it sounds like the subcommittee is intent to present a revised city council, city council article which is a commission that would provide for a district based system.
Yes.
Details to be determined.
Submit to the commission for review and consideration, yes.
All right, um, so that being said, do, I got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourned.
He was waiting to do that. That was a little bit too much.
For nine forty-five. Thank you.